To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, we will start with the consent items. And we have the approval of the minutes from January 20th, 2025, the regular meeting, the approval of the minutes from February 4th, 2025, regular meeting, and the approval of the minutes from the February 4th, 2025, study session. Did anyone have any corrections, comments? Changes? In the public? No one has the objection to approving all three sets of minutes together? I will air a motion.
So I go motion?
Moved by Mark. Second by Stephen. No other questions or comments? All in favor, please raise your right hand. One, two, three, four, five to zero. Six.
Five, sorry.
I think I just counted. I'm just looking to make sure it was on zero. Okay, moving on to the financial report. Shawna, do you want to walk us through the funds report?
Yes, for January, our education fund, we had $1,62,395.26 in receipts. Year-to-date receipts are the same. Month-to-date expenses are $1,083,303.95. And because this is the first, January is the beginning of the year, our beginning appropriation balance for 2025 is $15,370, $370,790. And after the year-to-date expenditures, it leaves our cash balance of $602,873.87. Our debt service fund, we had receipts of $8,231.34, same year-to-date, we did not have any expenses. Our appropriation balance for 2025 is $3,057,000, and leaving our cash balance at $1,568,116.5. Our operations fund, we had receipts of $10,954.46, our year-to-date receipts the same. Month-to-date expenses were $448,991.09. The 2025 appropriations are for $6,019,550. And then our cash balance at the end of January was negative $7,848.55.
Questions by the board on that? We also, is there any objection to going through things in the payrolls and approving all of the financial report items?
No objection.
So we also had need approval of claims totaling $938,354.80. And the approval of payrolls totaling $977,276.276.80. Any questions, thoughts, concerns on the funds report, the claims, or the payrolls? Questions by the audience? Okay. There's no other thoughts? I will take a motion to approve the consent items.
So moved.
Moved by Katie.
Second.
Second by Ethan. All in favor, raise your right hand. All opposed? Motion passes five to zero. Action items. We have the approval of the wage increase for the transportation department. We had discussed this at our study session. And... Do you want me to go ahead and read the letter?
I'll go ahead and read it.
On January 9th, 2025, Mr. Reinhold sent a memo to Rochester School Board for, at the present time, bus drivers picking up out-of-district students on regular bus routes were given an additional $15 per day. We'd like to propose a change to $15 for the first out-of-district stop and an additional $5 for each additional stop after the first. At the present time, we have approximately 15 stops out-of-district. These stops are house-to-house stops. Were there any other questions? Sorry, the second letter is, "At the present time, bus drivers picking up pre-K students on pre-K bus routes are paid a flat rate per day. We would like to propose a change to see these routes to be paid at a normal route, base rate plus mileage. We currently have two all-day pre-K routes. The present rate is $70 per day. The proposed pay would be $79.29 plus mileage. This would bring the pay for the pre-K routes to $88.59 bus 22 and $89.69 bus 6. The difference between the two routes is mileage." And that memo was from Mr. Reinhold as well. So we have, the proposed increase would, on one route would be from $122.25 daily rate to $127.25. On a second route, it would be $70 daily rate, be increased to $88.59. On the third route, it would be $70 daily rate, increase to $89.69. On the fourth route, it would be $120.49, increase to $145.49. On the fifth one, current rate is $112, $112.86, and it would be increased to $122.86. And the sixth route would be $119.37 current, and then be increased to $124.37.
So, as we figured this, we would propose that the rates, if the board approves, would start with the February 10th routes, so we would retro back to February 10th, and drivers would see that increase on their March 7th payroll paycheck. And that's what those numbers at the bottom there have been indicating.
So the yearly increase, or is this that 16,585,42, is that just for the balance of the school year?
Correct.
Any other questions? Thoughts by board members? Anyone in the public have any comments or questions that you'd like to ask about this item? Okay, great. All right. Barring no more comments, I'll hear a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ethan.
Second.
Second by Stephen. No other thoughts? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion passes five to zero. Next, we have the approval of the purchase of new servers for the corporation. And again, we talked about this at the study session. And Mr. Kissler is suggesting, or is recommending, people-driven technology for its purpose. I know we had a little confusion last time about the same names, and I'm like, scale, people, scale, people. So people-driven technology, it'd be $91,520.95. And all of these servers come with a five-year warranty. Any questions about the new servers for the school?
When we talked about this, you first brought it up. You had said that you were recommending the scale, correct? Because they were offering additional services.
No, we recommended people-driven, but they're selling the scale server. I was trying to keep myself straight.
We tried to revise the letter two or three times together to try to clarify that this time.
It's all good.
Any other questions? Any questions by the public? All right, firing up. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
All right, great. For people-driven technology, correct?
Yes, correct.
Motion by Stephen. Second by Mark. No other comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. Next, we have the approval of the Resolution 2025-04 to transfer funds from the education fund to the operation fund on a recurring basis in 2025. And... This is actually on the board behind us, and it's been published. This would be Resolution 2025-04. Any questions on this? And anyone like me to read this in total?
There's two.
Yeah, there's two different versions. One is just, like we've done in the past, just kind of a blanket, and we would determine when we would best handle, you know, whether we do it quarterly, whether we do it every six months. The other one is my recommendation, which would be to do a monthly transfer of the funding, and I did it for an amount up to the maximum amount we could do per month based on the calculations from the state from Form 54. So we would be able to, and I actually, I did 155,000. We actually could go up to $157,205.50. But I like nice even numbers, and keeping it simple. So I said maximum up to 155. Now that would give us where, if we have a month such as a three-pay month, that we just couldn't sustain a transfer from education to operations just because of that, to try to keep everything, you know, within the black or as close to the black as we possibly can throughout the whole year. That way, it keeps our cash flow kind of even. We know what to expect every month. We know, you know, that's going to be a little easier to manage. So that was why I structured it this way, that we could do it up to, that way, you know, if this month, say, February, we could only do a $50,000 transfer, then that would give us the opportunity to do that if in March, hey, we could do a full 155, and we're still going to be okay with both funds. So, but I wanted to leave that up for the board to discuss your thoughts on either way we went, which direction. That's why I gave two versions of the resolution.
I like the month.
I think it sounds good. I think that's good, planning ahead like that, just knowing that we'll have that sort of flexibility on the month instead of just pick a day and do it, we need to do it now. I like what that gives us.
Would you like, since there's two different versions, would you like me to read it therefore be resolved on the monthly one? Are you guys good? Okay. Any other, any questions by the public, by the audience, what we're talking about? Any other questions or comments by the board members? So I will hear a motion on the Resolution 2025-04 on the monthly allocation, or transfer.
So moved.
Moved by Katie.
Second.
Second by Ethan. No other comments? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. And next, we're going to move on to the approval to void checks two years and older per the state board accounts. And this would be a number of, the following list of checks that were voided by the state board accounts guidelines. These checks were warranted, warrant to void two years after December 31st of the year issued. And then there's a number of different checks on here that are on the website and on the board behind me. Would anyone like me to read the list?
I got a question for Shawna. Does this, will those funds go, be credited back to that individual account?
Yes.
Like to operations or to education?
Yes, yes.
Any other questions? Questions by the audience? Barring no other comments, I'll accept a motion.
So moved.
Second. Moved by Mark. Second by Katie to approve voiding of the checks. No other comments? All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. To student stakeholder focus, the donations for February 2025. Columbia Elementary, we have a donation of $100 for Zebra Zone by Mrs. Jill Weaver. Columbia Elementary, unknown amount for school supplies for students from Darlene Cruz. For RHS, $100 for prom for Ryan and Hope Shally. For RHS, $10,000 for Rochester High School Band Department program needs by an anonymous donor. RCSC, $117.79 for student needs from the Kruger Community Reward Program. RCSC, $5,655.43 for the pack, for pack and backpack program by Grace Church. And for RCSC, $10,000 for the food pantry and backpack program by an anonymous donor. And once again, whether it's $1 or like it is tonight with just astronomical amounts, it's always a blessed feeling by our community and how much they support our school system and the kids, especially in our families. It's just absolutely amazing. So thank you to everyone who donated, you know, every month. Any comments by the board?
Just incredibly generous. Our community is very generous.
Any comments by the audience? Barring none, I'll accept a motion to approve the donations for February 2025.
So moved.
Moved by Ethan.
Second.
Second by Katie. All in favor, just raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero. And moving on to the personnel report. We have recommendations for Riddle Elementary, Olivia Rock maternity leave beginning April 25th, 2025 through August 1st, 2025. Rochester High School, Alexander Goodman leave of absence for non-birthing parent from April 21st, 2025 through the remainder of the 2024-25 school year. Special Services, Erin Miranda, temporary nurse at RHS, beginning February 4th, 20, yeah, February 4th, 2025 through April 11th, 2025. Hourly rate, $20. Tracy Lineher, addendum to salary proposal, annually $39,000. Rochester High School Athletic resignation, Chad Thomas, RHS Girls Golf Coach, effective January 24th, 2025. Anana FM LA, Dawn Nappin, beginning February 19th, 2025 to approximately April 4th, 2025. Jennifer Wallen, intermittent, beginning January 24th, 2025 for a family, for a family member. Deanna Vandabosh, intermittent, beginning February 10th, 2025. And resignation of Alicia Help, DLL, Speech Services, effective February 13th, 2025. Any comments or questions about the personnel report?
I do want to say, not to draw them out specifically, but I do want to say a big thank you to Mr. Thomas for 24 years as being a golf coach. It was a major dedication. Definitely worthwhile, I appreciate it.
In the same respect, I'd like to draw attention to Tracy and what she's doing. She and Lucas have really teamed up to make sure that the students of Rochester get the best care and support that they can, and that is a dedication from those two and the efforts that they are making. So thank you for caring about the students and for taking that leap of faith for us and embracing this.
I appreciate this line her. She has always been, being one having little school, she puts kids first.
I suppose we'll share.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Comments by the audience? Other comments? All right. I need a motion to approve. So moved. Moved by Katie.
Second.
Second by Stephen. All in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries five to zero.
Mrs. Bates? Well, we have two of our drivers here. We will start with Kevin, please, with transportation and his monthly report. But I want to begin by thanking transportation. Mother Nature has not played kindly lately, and they have done, Kevin has done a phenomenal job in communicating with me and helping make those really early morning decisions. But to the drivers, as while I know that the roads aren't always the best out there, so thank you for your support in bringing those kiddos safely into the district and then making sure we get them home. So thank you. Kevin, if you'd like to begin by giving the monthly report, we will start with you and other specialized departments, and then move to the administrators.
We just had a, had curling done for last week from some, for some small, minor recalls. Got them fixed fairly quick. Mother Nature have given us a run for our money this month, but if it's all good, we're all kosher right now. I'm hoping warm weather comes soon. I'm over the cold.
I won't thank you for those 4:45 and 5 o'clock phone messages, but thank you for what you did. Wendy, thank you for helping with the reception. If you'd like to share what you've been working on.
So we participated in the USDA supply chain disruption and student participation. This is nationwide, and what they address is key challenges for our district. Our processor link also had something that we participated in, and processor link is two of our tracking to make sure we're spending our commodity dollars and we're verifying that any purchases come in, that they're using our actual commodity dollars for that. The point of this one was to simplify procurement on both our commodity dollars and for our RFPs. I have upcoming training for SFSP and civil rights will be one of them. Ethics will be another one, and there's going to be a minimum of three more. The state usually has two that we have to do, and then they'll rotate an additional three to four, and generally, this takes three to five hours, depending on what they decide we need to train on this year. I also have training for the 25-26 school year, for sugar and sodium changes with the IDOD, and General Mills with their dietitian and their chef on staff. Next year, we'll be going to cereal, it can only be six grams of sugar. Flavored milk is 10 grams, and yogurt is two grams per, two ounces. So that's an important training to make sure. We do have some cereals that are already on the market that passes for that. Our milk's already passed for that, and so they're trying to come online a lot faster than when we had this revamped 10, 15 years ago. NISIC, we had our meeting, our GPO, we voted to award it to HPS and GFS for our 25-26 school year. We had six vendors present, Schwan's, Kena and Associates, Pacific Coast, Simplot, Nepon and Riches. This will go before the NISIC board tomorrow. Once they vote on it and we get the approval, then we'll have the documents that we can share with you. The next NISIC meeting is 3/6. I had a meeting with our state nutrition specialist. She discussed the SFSP training and requirements, and also eligibility on how we decide who can be considered an open site. She also reminded us that the whole district as a whole across the state of Indiana, that field reps will be out, not because we've done something wrong, but because we went to a five-year cycle for our big reviews, so they have a little bit extra free time so that they could come in and see what we're doing, so they can help us before we actually get to a full review. They also said that there's five additional more trainings on top of the other I spoke about that is available, and I've signed up for all of them. Our farm-to-school grant to date still has funding in it for the 25-26 school year. Hopefully, it'll last the whole school year. This was actually supposed to be a one-year grant. This would lead us into the third year, so they're hoping to get some more funding from the USDA. We have our commodity survey open that I've been working on. This is for the 25-26 school year. Generally, this takes one to three weeks to fill out, and then another week to go in and put where our bidding goes. This year, we were awarded $95,925.21 with $15,000 for DOD fresh fruits and vegetables for the 25-26 school year. Coming up, like I said, there's additional training. We're going to be doing feeding for any children that participate in SFSP, and we have iLearn and iRead snacks. Anybody have any questions? And I cut it down, but there's more of it, yeah, I don't think you want to hear everything in my house.
Maintenance Department, we continue to deal with staffing issues. Hopefully, we'll get that dwindled down. We've got, we're negative one at the high school. One thing that we are looking at is, we'd like to get backups for all the schools as far as our head building techs, because right now, what we do is, one of my maintenance guys goes over to that building and fills in, so it leaves my staff at the maintenance area short-staffed. So we're trying to figure out a way to get that intertwined. So we won't shortcut anybody. We'd like to come up with a plan to maybe have, like a part-time employee or something that could fill in at any school, you know, so they'd be able to, they'd be trained to where they could handle, you know, anything at Columbia, Riddle, Middle or High School. Another thing that we, we'd been working on was, uh... We're also looking at options to work with scheduling and worktimes to meet the cleaning needs, to the best use of our employees, and limiting overtime needs. Overtime is, you know, a big factor in the budget. So we're trying to minimize that and keep that down to a minimum. Trying to get back on a regular meeting schedule for our staff meetings once a month. Between the weather and sickness that has plagued us here, past couple months, it's been, been trying. One other thing, I'll be sending out an email to the corporation is, if we have a work order, or if somebody has a need to have something done, we'd like to have that submitted into a work order instead of a phone call or text message. Phone call or text message is good if we need to have that done right now as an emergency thing, but if it's something that somebody needs fixed, you know, light bulb needs changed or whatever, then we'd like to have that sent over as a work order instead of a text message or phone call. So this way, we can keep track of things and know where, where people are. One other thing that we've been kind of sort of looking into is, we're looking into the cost of inspections of the electrical, heating and cooling, and water systems in the buildings. That would help provide us information that we need for, like the water, water shut-offs, you know, water upgrades, electrical upgrades. We have, in one building right now, we're, we've got a breaker. I've been told there was only two in the United States of the... I've been told there was only two in the United States of this breaker because it's so outdated. So only two of them in the United States and they're both used. They're $400 and they're not guaranteed to work. So we could buy them, put it in and we'd be out of luck if it didn't work, assuming that it does work. But that's just something that we need to look at is upgrading and getting current things that are severely outdated that are, you can't get anymore, you know, obsolete, you know, which a lot of things are going obsolete nowadays. So, you know, that's one thing that we need to look at. And then as time permits, we continue to work on the removal of broken and unused furniture and equipment and selling those at the auction.
Mr. Snyder?
All right. Well, last week, as you all know, was Valentine's Day and that's a very big day in our building. Lot of activities going on. The kids absolutely live for Valentine's Day. You don't mess with Valentine's Day at Columbia. And so we had a really good, really good Valentine's Day. We also had our pre-K brought in. I counted, I think, eight or nine parent volunteers that came in and they had like a game day where the parents came in and then sat around with a small group of kids and they played different board games and different games. It was really good activity. Part of our on my way pre-K requirement is you have to have a certain number of hours of play per day, which is good, although some people see that as a negative. It's really, really good for the development of young kids at an early age. So it's a part of their curriculum and it's not really just playing. So there's a lot more to it. But the parents coming in, it was really good to have them come in and do all that. We love getting parents into the building and being involved and active with our kids. We also had SRO Appreciation Day over at Columbia today. That was on Saturday and so we celebrated our SRO today. We really appreciate Rick and all of the work that he and the Sheriff's Department, Rochester Police, everybody, but Rick in particular, working in our building and in our corporation. We really appreciate that. So we're going to be kicking off the Kids' Heart Challenge on Thursday and that's something that we do every year. So we'll get that going, like I said, on Thursday. Next week we've got Book Fair. Book Fair will go all week during the school day and will culminate on Friday evening, afternoon, late afternoon, early evening with Parent Night where parents can come in. We set it up in the gym and parents can come in, buy books and stuff with their kids. We'll also have quite a few parent volunteers in the building next week as well, hoping. The week after that, we have Peter Pan. Actually RMS is doing Peter Pan at the high school, but we are going to go and they did a special screening, a special show for Columbia to come over and visit and see that show. And that's really, really good for those young kids to see the older kids working and working hard and so they'll enjoy that. And our last Zebra Zone winner, we were, we were supposed to take the kids to Nubianos to make pizza and that fell through. So we are now taking the kids to the library, public library, which is one of the trips that we haven't made because we have our own library in our building. But we got thinking, why haven't we gone to all the places in town we take kids and do activities with? So we reached out to the public library. They're going to host us. They're going to do a craft with the kids, do some readings and then we're going to get like a private tour of the facilities and show the kids kind of the ins and outs of how that public library actually works. And I think it will be actually a really good trip for the kids and I'm kind of upset I didn't do it sooner. So we're going to do that. And then the following month, which I don't know if it's before or after our next board meeting, our Zebra Zone kids will be going to the high school. Instead, they're going to go to Sarah's class again. We do this every year where they go in and Sarah's Culinary Arts Advanced classes bring the kids in. They have a recipe and they teach them how to go through, use a recipe, cook. They get to cook, cook a meal, cook a, maybe not a meal, but could cook something. And then eat it there with the kids and have lunch. We have lunch over there and stuff. And so that's a real good experience. Again, thanks to the high school allowing us to kind of do that. So that's what we got going on at Columbia. Yes, we too celebrated Valentine's Day, Snyder. At Riddle. I ended up with five cupcakes, three cookies, three suckers and 20 UBS. It was wonderful. We are desperately trying to wrap up One School, One Book. The weather, as with everything else, has pushed that back a little bit, but we're going to try to do that tomorrow. We have our One School, One Book Field Trip winners. We'll be heading to the planetarium on Thursday, I believe it is. So that's pretty cool. Mrs. Gee's working on our second grade concert will be coming up, I want to say the Thursday before spring break. Irie coming up the first week of March. We launched our kids, our Mrs. Walkman launched the Kids' Heart Program over at Riddle last week. Snyder heads up. You might be dressing as a duck because that's what they're going to have me do, buddy. Girls on the Run is going to get started and thank you. Yes, I know I'm guessing you're probably going to talk about Peter Pan too, but we got an invite as well from RMS, so appreciate that. So any questions?
We are trying to finish up that checkpoint two. The weather and delays, we've got seventh grade math just almost done. So looks like we're going to be ending mostly in the 60s and then topping out at 82 for fifth grade math, which is just amazing. And that appeals to my teachers and students for working hard. We did have our spelling bees, so congratulations to our first, second, and third place winners. First place with Haley Howell, second place Wiley Buckner, and third place Asher Merrill. Congrats to those kiddos. We have midterms on the 12th and intercession invites went out today for spring intercession. Coming up, we will start looking at our checkpoint three and seeing how kids do on that. We do have the Peter Pan musical coming up. That is February 28th and March 1st at 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium. Looking forward to that as well as showing the younger ones at Columbia and Riddle that musical as well. We do also with the high school, on the same day, we'll be doing a Cults Choose Love Assembly on March 11th. That is about bullying and kindness and social media. So some representatives from the cults will be here, so that will be a fun day. We have a student teacher at RMS and he is bringing back something we used to do long ago called 20% Time. That is where students get to pick something that they're interested in, do a project on that with mentors, adult mentors, and then they get to present that, that they use 20% of their time, which is one class period a week, in these high ability students in English in sixth grade. So that will be on March 12th. And then we'll end the nine weeks with our talent show on PBIS Day at RMS. Any questions?
I did not get invited to Peter Pan Jr., which I don't understand.
Star again.
We heard him sing in your book class though. Easy. That was not great. We had the FFA Green Hand banquet. We also hosted a FAFSA night. I shouldn't say we, the guidance department did, did a tremendous job with that. We got four young men going down to Banker's Life on Friday and hopefully again on Saturday morning who qualified for the state wrestling finals, which is a big deal. We've got seven in the TRC out of 10 schools and we own four of them. So that's a credit to Coach Wilson and his program. We hosted the Boys Wrestling Regional. The key to that was it takes a lot to make that happen. We want to thank the Sheriff's Department for their support, but we also want to thank our construction class who built the podium, our art class who painted the podium, and our culinary arts class who provided all the food for the coaches, myself and all the workers that day. So it really does involve some of our classrooms there when we host that kind of stuff. It is FFA week. It's Great Jeans Week and dress-up days at the high school. We have the big tractor parade on Wednesday. Mother Nature is making that a little more of a challenge than it has been years past, but we are still going to have the tractor parade on Wednesday. Mr. Malco, or Coach Malco, broke Clyde Lyles' record and is now the all-time winner as boys' basketball coach. And he also, combined with Boys and Girls, got his 300th win last week. So it was a big week for Coach Malco. We plan to recognize him tomorrow night before the varsity game since he broke it on the road. Mr. Pearson is a finalist for the Golden Owl Award for Indiana FFA. That's also a big deal. That is for his wisdom and leadership of our FFA students. Our JAG group participated in the Career Development Conference. I think we had one group who actually won the contest and they get to move on. So that's a pretty big deal for our JAG program as well. We'd like to thank the school board for your support and Rochester Glass and Chris Brown and his family. If you haven't been in the athletic hallway yet and seen the new trophy case, it does make that hallway pop. So we thank them for that. We have a district-wide toy drive going on right now in regards to Rachel Waze, who's a senior who couldn't come to school for about a year and a half, two years, who's actually back in the building now after her medical fight. So we're really excited about supporting her and her venture there. We participated in solo and ensemble with the choir students. There was eight golds, a silver and a quartet who also got gold. And our band students also had five golds, six silvers and a bronze. And two of our band students are two solos and one ensemble go on to the state contest on March 1st. So congratulations to those programs. Our art teacher, who's, it's her first year here in Rochester, came down to my office in tears. Big deal, got a student accepted into the Chicago Art Institute and that student also got an $88,000 scholarship. We were really excited that day, took a picture with Zevi after we wiped the tears away and kind of moved on. We had School Counselors Week. Big shout out to Mrs. Brown, Mrs. Seifer. And we've talked about master schedules in here during study sessions. We just scrapped one and threw it out the window and we're rebuilding the new one. So those two ladies do a tremendous job, not only scheduling, but working with our students and if there are any concerns or celebrations for them. And then we tried to celebrate Mr. Utter today for SRO Day, but he was already at Columbia, so we'll buy him lunch tomorrow because we appreciate him. Coming up, we have a blood drive coming up. We're headed to state for wrestling, headed to state for solo and ensemble. We have some choir and band concerts that'll be on the 10th and 12th. The iLearn checkpoints. SAT is on March 6th. A big change of that is, is in the past we have asked for an eLearning Day with that with the changes in the SAT test. As long as, you know, Mr. Williams comes through with me being able to borrow the tables from the fairgrounds, I will be able to do that in the morning and not have to release students. So we'll just keep everybody there and be able to do that in our oxygen. We did that at PSAT, it worked really well. And so we're going to do that for the SAT. We are having our eighth graders take and experience a field trip that day, so they're out of that wing of the building so we can make that happen and keep school going for everybody else. And then, you know, March 14th is the big day, right? Spring break starts.
Any questions? Mr. Schenels?
At EL, we have LEDA testing that should be finished this week, weather permitting, we'll be done with that. And then the special education world, we're just waiting on the Department of Ed to release what the new IIP system is going to look like, how the training gets rolled out, and then we'll get going on that.
Before we dismiss, I just, we heard about a lot of accomplishments that administrators have shared, department heads have shared, but it's because of everybody in this room. We just have, we are blessed with a wonderful faculty, a wonderful staff, and without their help and support, our students couldn't rise to the challenge and, and be spotlighted like they were this evening and every month. So thank you to each of you for the jobs that you do. From transportation, making sure they get here, to teachers, I know Mrs. Shally's there, to the administrators, to special services, to the administrative office, thank you for all you do.
Any other comments by the board?
Guys are doing amazing. I mean, it's just every, every time, we just, there's so many wonderful things that are going on and I know you're all swimming to keep your heads above water most days and I understand that. And if you have to do it in duck costume, that's just what we have to do. Because that's part of the job.
I'm treading on that.
Whatever, bluetree. Okay, thank you everybody for coming. We truly appreciate it. Have a good evening. Stay safe.